Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabad House of Delmar together with my co-host, Mark Ronig.
And Rabbi, we have a special guest with us today. We always like to focus on education and that's a big part of Judaism and Jewish education, but also in secular world, you know, the Albany City School Board is, you know, Albany City Schools is very, one of the larger districts, if not the largest one in the capital district. So, a former president and current member of the board, of the Albany City School District Board is with us, Kenny Bruce, welcome back to The Jewish View.
Shalom.
We've been here before.
Thank you for having me.
Well, it's always good to see you and have you back here.
We have to have a yearly report card if we're in the school district when it comes to report cards.
Yeah, it's just about a year as a matter of fact.
Okay, so what's the, an F on the report card?
Well, we've got some good things going and some not as good things going. We're in the middle of a search for a superintendent and interim superintendent is actually doing a great job.
Okay.
So, we have, I believe, turned the corner since the last time we spoke.
Were you, did you like the previous Dr. V, the previous superintendent?
Well, she resigned not long after I became president.
Right.
And...
Did you push her? Did you, was that something you wanted to see?
Well...
Personally, I'm just saying...
Yeah, from a personal standpoint, I would have liked to see a little more planning and a little more execution. So, from that standpoint, Dr. Wilkins has really worked out.
Could you please tell us about what this Black Box Theater is about?
Yes, so, our spring play, which we have annually, last year was produced in the Black Box Theater, which was a newly constructed theater in the Abrokin Building, which is in...
On Kent Street?
Yes, on Kent Street, which is a couple blocks from Albany High School and part of the Albany High School.
And after the renovation will really be part of the Albany High School.
Right, right, yeah.
It may be seven years from now, but it'll be there.
Right, it'll all be combined very shortly. So, a theater was constructed without board approval, although some board members were aware of it, including myself, I was aware of the fact that a classroom was being repurposed. I wasn't aware of the extent of it, so, opening night of the, well, actually, it was the second night of the production, I attended and I noticed some safety issues and had some concerns. There weren't enough exit signs, the aisles were too narrow and not lighted, it seemed like it was too dark, there were wires that were hanging lower than I thought they should be hanging.
Sure.
I have a background in civil engineering, although I've never been a practicing engineer, so I did notice some things that led to, led to concerns. I also, I'd been on the board for about 18 months and I wasn't aware of a project that was approved of this magnitude. So, I actually followed up and went to several board members and asked if, if this was a project that had been approved and what was the status of it and how was it authorized and where did we get the money? And it turned out that it had not been board approved. And at a facilities meeting, I actually questioned our Assistant Superintendent for Business Affairs and our Director of Facilities and our Architect around how it got constructed, where the money came from, and the initial response was misrepresentation of some of the very relevant facts. And that actually continued over several iterations of questioning via email, direct questioning and conversations and facilities committee and board meetings.
So, this was under, you know, these assistants and deputies in the different departments, they were saying, "Dr. V told us and so we just did it?" I mean, without questioning her authority or, was that type of answer?
Yes, the response was that...
You were just doing what we were told?
Yes, that was, that was the response.
And are they all still in place? They...
They are actually all still in place.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, well, they were, like you were saying, I mean, is that a problem? That they were just, they didn't question, they just did what they were told to do?
Well, so, everybody reports to the superintendent, but everybody also has responsibilities for...
Common sense.
For, for the things they do. I mean, one, one example is we hire our architect for his expertise around assuring that we adhere to all the legal requirements of constructing any project we're doing within the school district that he has oversight of. He would probably argue after the fact that he didn't have oversight of this particular project, although he was there...
Right.
Giving advice, contractor was paid through his contract.
This is CS Arch?
This is CS Arch. The Assistant Superintendent for Business Affairs made some transfers that actually appeared on a board, on the board docket. We, we made the transfers legally, they didn't include a lot of information, but they, they did appear. So, the transfers in that respect were legal. Now...
Must have made you furious when you found out that...
It did. So, I still have not received the answer because initially the Assistant Superintendent for Business Affairs says that all of the money that was used to construct the project actually came from the 14-15 budget. However, it was built in the 15-16 school year. So, in order to transfer those funds, they'd have to be transferred in a very specific way, they'd have to be encumbered for a very specific reason, and it's not obvious that they were transferred like that. And we later learned that there were other, also, some of the, some of the monies came from the 15-16 budget as well.
Hmm, and how much was this renovation of, or building of this new, of this theater?
So, as near as we can figure.
Yeah, right.
It's, it's $131,000 were paid to outside contractors that we know of. So, one of my issues is when we conducted our investigation, the board-led investigation, what we did was, we asked our auditors to verify that those transactions took place. We didn't look to see if there were any other potentially transactions related to the construction of this, of this theater. So, we know $131,000 were spent.
But it could be more.
It could be more.
And we just still don't know?
We still don't know.
A year or so after this has been completed?
Right, right. So, the, the project was executed within a operations and maintenance account, or the operations and maintenance account, for the whole school district. So, that, everybody is paid out of that account, every, every adjustment to every school is made out of that account. So, in general, a project is actually executed with its own, with its own budget, its own budget line, so that afterwards you can look and you, you know, with clarity and certainty that this much was spent on that project because every transaction happened within, within this budget line. So, this, this one did not happen like that. So, I, I mean, I am concerned because it, it feels like there's a lot of unanswered questions even still.
That's right.
It was constructed and when we did our investigation, there's actually nothing that ties the actual decision to the superintendent. There's just word of mouth where people say, "It's, Dr. V wanted this done and we did it," but there's no, there's no proof of that.
And, and no emails that you were able to ascertain or do some sort of forensic documentation?
Right, so, I mean, the other issue is the board actually developed this investigation without me, so, I had...
How'd that happen?
I'd recommended an investigation over, over several months, you know, based on the response from the Assistant Superintendent of Business Affairs and the board continually voted not to move forward with an investigation. I notified them that if we didn't investigate, I would actually notify state ed, which in the end I did. We voted at least three times, six to one essentially, not to investigate. After notifying state ed, state ed actually padlocked the space and determined that they would have to investigate to see, basically to re-engineer the, the construction process.
So, they, they padlocked Black Box Theater?
Yes.
Okay, and that's still padlocked to this day?
Uh, no, actually, they did the investigation, they determined that it was actually not, it didn't adhere to safety code.
Right.
And required that we could do one of two things, we could keep it padlocked and do the necessary, take the necessary steps to construct it as a theater, and that would involve board approval, because it's a capital project, it would require voter approval.
Oh, okay.
And then it would require an architectural plan and SED approval, and then it would require somewhere around $100,000 more to actually construct it and use it as a theater for 250 people, which is what we actually used it for.
And, and at the time, at this time, you're actually moving that school, so it wouldn't be a long-lasting investment because that build, I mean, that theater wouldn't necessarily be there, it would be over at the main high school.
Right, we have a plan within the new high school project to build a theater very similar, yes.
So, why fix this one up? But it's still $130,000 that down the drain.
Right, and so it's $130,000 and because we didn't do it as a capital project, we didn't actually receive capital aid from, from the state, which we would have received, which was $100,000. It, it cost us $15,000 to actually deconstruct it, so, so now it's, it's back to being a classroom for up to 49 students and it's used as a, as a practice space and a small performance space. But during the performances, and we had several last spring, we had 250, 250 people in the space, a space that wasn't, was deemed unsafe for less than 49.
Fire Commissioner I hear is coming.
So, yeah, the Fire Commissioner usually does a, a building inspection and a certificate of occupancy before any space is, is used, but since we didn't go through the process, that was actually, that was never done.
Oh, my gosh.
So, I mean, there's, there's the fiduciary side of this, which is, we're, you know, how to, how we diverted funds and commingled funds and misappropriated funds, but at the center of this is actually the safety of our students, our employees, and because we had productions in there, our community as well. So, I, I mean, I, this is a big deal in my mind.
Absolutely, and I agree, and I see it as a big deal also, that's why we're spending so much time talking about this, so, and it really is, it's astounding.
So, yes...
Are we talking a little education?
Well, this is education, this is the arts, this is, no, this is our education dollars that would have been going to other purposes instead of, you know, being a rusk of off in a gelt, as you would say.
You're throwing away money.
But you also filed, I don't think they call it a lawsuit, but you filed something with the State Education Department that is quite voluminous, I mean, it's...
Is it there?
Yeah, yeah, it's 100 and...
230 pages.
230 pages, okay.
So, I, I did file a complaint with the commissioners, it's a commissioner's appeal, it's actually the response, or one way to, one, one alternative that is available to a board member who, who feels like there has been a problem or, or an issue related to the board itself. The Commissioner of Education is, governs the school district and the Board of Regents is the governing body of the State Department of Education. So, basically, I filed an appeal around the fact that the board met with me, deliberated, created an investigation without my presence. There are laws that relate to how a municipal corporation actually notifies their meetings, how they notify board members, how they notify the public, and this was actually a meeting that was exempt from open meetings law because it was a meeting of the, special meeting of the board with counsel. So, it's exempt from open meeting laws, but the requirement, the notification requirements still must be upheld. And the guise was that they were meeting in response to my public enunciations about the Black Box Theater. And up until that point, my primary public enunciation was actually notifying the State Education Department. So, out of that meeting, it did come a letter that recommended my resignation from the board.
By whom?
By the board, the six...
The collective body?
The six board members, it was...
Wanted you to resign as president?
Uh, resigned from the board.
From the board, altogether?
Yes, yes, based, based on my actions and my actions at that point was primarily notifying state ed of what I thought was a unsafe environment and a, and a, a use of funds that was not...
Well, the voters put you on the board, so it should be up to the voters to, you know, get the chance to, whether to either re-up your commitment or not if you decide to run again.
Right, 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 well, I, you know...
I mean, you're not like Carl Palladino in Buffalo School District where you're going off, you know, half crazy here, you know?
Well, they did, they did make that comparative reference.
Oh, they did? Oh, I'm sorry to hear that, okay.
So, now...
You don't seem like, I know Carl and you don't seem anywhere near.
Right, arguably, the board could have met without me present if they were discussing, if they were only discussing actions related to my actions, even if, even if, you know, whatever their perspective was on my actions, they could, the board did vote six to one not to, not to move forward, I did, despite the vote, move forward and contact state ed and in the end I contract, contacted the Controller's Office as well.
Okay.
So, the board could arguably meet and discuss that situation, they should have notified me and they should have explained why they would like to exclude me.
Well, if nothing else, out of courtesy, out of pure courtesy to you.
Right, right, and then...
Now, were you president of the board at the time that this meeting happened?
I was president, yes.
Well, then it looks like there, they got egg on their face, not you.
Right.
They all met without even the president and the, and your vice chair didn't?
Well, I believe the vice president called the meeting.
That was Sue Adler?
Right, right. They also have not shared an agenda, they have not told me how many times they met, nor, nor where they met, nor the results of the meeting, the results of, some result of the meeting...
That's disrespectful.
That is disrespectful, yes.
And how do they show that as being a good model for the students? When this, when you're trying to show, you know, you're like, be held up as the model for what students should follow, when they move forward and they get into the real world?
That's an excellent question, I'd like to ask them that myself. I mean, the, the essence of this situation in my mind is accountability. We found a situation, we as a board could have dealt with it accordingly and done a proper investigation. I mean, the other thing is, we, we hired as an investigator, a, a partner at a firm that has a contract with the school district, so he had a conflict of interest. We asked our internal auditors who have a contract with the school district to actually do the necessary auditing, again, in conflict of interest. We could have done this the right way and I really feel like, you know, when I, when I noticed the situation, I brought it to the board and I expected that we would move forward accordingly, and we didn't. So, I mean, I do feel like it was disrespectful to me, but more importantly disrespectful to, as you mentioned, to the voters, who expect that when we're making decisions and deliberating important issues, that everyone they elected to be present is present.
And what's the status of the notice of petition, the complaint here?
Right, so, there's 20 days, the, the, the school district has 20 days to respond. The Commissioner can decide to meet with me, which I requested, or she can decide not to meet with me. It's more than 30 days after the actual event, so she can actually decide not to hear it at all. So, it's, it's in process at the moment.
It's in the process, yeah.
Right.
Did you, now, I go to some of the school board meetings, not all of them, but did you bring this up in a public forum that they were disrespectful to you or that you really wanted to, that you felt like this action that they were doing and sort of make this publicly known?
I, I did, on a couple different occasions. I, I notified them that I would file an appeal, although that was in August, so it's a long time until I filed my appeal. I, you know, for me, it, I just, I'd like to do the job well and I was elected to, to do a certain job and that's act, act as the city's fiduciary, and that's what I've tried to do. The personal front to me by not including me in, in the meeting could have been offset if we actually, if the investigation actually turned out as I, as I think it should have. It did not turn out that way, we released the results of the investigation last week, which is what led to my, my filing of this appeal.
And what was that investigation, what did they find? The results, what were the results?
The results is basically inadvertent mistakes.
Inadvertent?
And we've...
Did they, did you show them the definition of what inadvertent means?
I, I did not. I was in disagreement around, you know, the decisions related to the investigation and essentially no one was fully held accountable. Now, Assistant Superintendent of Business Affairs is essentially our CFO and he commingled funds, he misappropriated funds, he diverted funds, he may have transferred funds inappropriately, well, that would be misappropriation, and when questioned, he actually lied about it. So, I, I don't know any institution, organization, business who would allow a CFO who has this in their recent past to continue as CFO, but he...
Now, you're not, if you were president, you would have some force to, in terms of what you could say, right, about this?
Well, if I were president, I'd be speaking on behalf of the board and I'm, today I'm just speaking purely on behalf of, of myself, so my...
Of yourself as a citizen or as a self as a board member?
Uh, there's some debate around how you, actually, when you speak publicly, whether you, so, so I'm, I'm saying as, as a citizen...
Okay.
Who, who happens to serve on the board.
Okay.
I, I think Albany citizens should be very uncomfortable with a CFO.
And they don't know anything about this. And that's why I'm wondering if you spoke out publicly or maybe not forcefully enough, I mean, I'm just wondering how much...
Well, there's, there's some limit to how much you can speak during an investigation as a board member.
Okay.
So, that's why I'm speaking out now, the investigation concluded last week and the board released their findings. So, I, you know, I am saying to, to the, Albany citizens that I'm not comfortable with it and I don't believe you should be comfortable with it.
Okay, so there'll be a lot more on this coming up and hopefully in future meetings, I mean, hopefully you can get some people to attend the school board meetings, to protest this, to speak out during public comment, to let the board know, because if the board doesn't hear from anyone, they think, oh, everyone's going to be happy with this, it's going to happen again and it's not, you know, no one's feet are going to be held to the fire.
Right, and I think that's the essence of it, it's, you know, the board has almost lost track of who they represent. They feel like if they have majority, they're just accountable to each other. Well, the six of us decided, whether it's legal or not, we have decided and let's move forward, but in the end, we represent the people of Albany and we're accountable to Albany citizens, but if Albany citizens aren't paying attention, then, you know, maybe what they think is, is actually accurate, they're only accountable to themselves. But I don't, I don't believe that's the case and that's why I'm speaking out now.
So, let me, so, I sort of glossed over this, so, they asked you to resign from the board when you were president of the board?
Yes.
But initially, but eventually what happened was you were...
Voted, well, it was a one-year term, so my term concluded and the vice president, who basically responsible for, for many of the developments here, was elected board president.
Right.
I mean, the essence of it is, at this point, we made mistakes.
Are you comfortable being a member of the board?
I'm comfortable being a member, so like I can contribute.
It seems like you don't have as many shackles, like you don't have as much, as many constraints as being president, when you said you're president, you speak on behalf of the board. Now, you're a member, you could speak as a citizen or you could speak out.
Right, well...
Without having a misperception of who you're speaking.
Right, well, there are less limitations and actually, I mean, if you're president and you are not aligned with the board, it's very challenging because it's hard to speak for the board when that's not, you know, where your heart is. So, at the moment, you know, six members, the same six members, well, not the same six members, because we have a new member, six members have elected Ms. Adler president and she's, she's, she's the president.
Right, no, that I was at, that's me.
Yeah, yeah.
Pictures to show it.
Right.
But I just wanted to, so you have a, so, so you're a member of the board and do you find that there's any sort of retribution against you on the board, that there's something like they're isolating you or they're ostracizing you in some way?
Right, well, I believe after, after last year's meeting in, in July, they have actually treated me very differently and tried to make decisions around me and without me and have not included me in, in some of the deliberations.
Because it was only January that you, that you voted, not voted as president?
Right, right.
So, you had between August and January where they were doing things where you felt ostracized or...
Uh, I did feel, I did feel ostracized. Initially, the president generally leads a superintendent search, they were not cooperating, they wouldn't respond to my emails and I felt like it's such an important issue that I wanted someone else to step in and lead it and Anne Savage volunteered and has done a great job.
Okay.
And she's done a great job.
So, it's just you and one other guy on the board?
It is just me and Sridar Shatar.
Couldn't pronounce his name, that's why I said another guy.
He's, he's new in, new in January.
Right. And the rest are, the women are running the board?
The women, the women are running the board. Yes, they are.
Well, you could say in honor of Women's History Month if you want to make it nice.
Mr. Mark, can we, we only a few more minutes, I want to start on a positive note.
Okay.
At least something is just that, actually, the graduation rate I hear is going up in Albany High.
Yes, it has, yes. Thanks, thanks for ending on a positive note.
All right.
Yes, last year, the graduation rate, the certified state education graduation rate was 62%, which is the first time we've been in the 60s in a, in a very, very long time.
Is there any reason for, I mean, is there most policy, I mean, some change of...
I, I believe the superintendent is actually very focused on student outcomes and she's done a good job on, last year she did a great job on students right on the fringe who could have gone either way, getting them across the stage, getting them their diploma, I think that has made a significant difference. And if you come to our board meetings, they're very different, she has a plan in place, Plan A, B, and C, and we've, she works her plans, she executes her plans and, you know, we have an organization that actually, that actually works.
So, are you going to keep her? I mean, if you say she's doing such a good job.
I was just going to say, you could probably save a lot of money by not doing this executive search.
Right, well, we voted in the past six...
Six to one.
Six to one, I supported appointing her as the permanent superintendent, yes.
Yeah, person's doing a good job, that's the best thing, if you have hands-on, you can see whatever, so that's why I know that with a lot of people have good resumes and then they come and do the job and a little bit disappointment, but now you know what she's doing.
Well, that's almost a compliment for accountability, you know, someone who's doing a good job should be rewarded and, and supported and provided with an opportunity to continue to be successful and, and those who have, have lost their way a little bit should, should be held accountable.
But you know, she's personable also.
Yes, that's what...
She's personable and that's, that's how, I remember, I know that there are some superintendents who just walk around like drudge, you know, they're just slogging along, they find they have the weight of the world on their shoulders, the students feel that, they see that, they, you know, but Doc, but Wilk, Mrs. Wilkins doesn't really have that, she's very up and bouncy and positive and whatever, you know, is negative, she's holds it and puts it in the closet, leaves it aside, you know?
Right, well, I think it, I would attribute that to a couple things. First off, she's good at her job, she has a lot of experience and she's been within the school district for 25-plus years. So, if they ask, if someone asks her a question, she knows the answer.
That's right.
Right, and the other thing is, she knows the families, she knows the employees, she was president of the Administrators Association for, for eight years, she was principal for 15 years.
At Myers most recently.
Yes, yeah, and the last 10 years at Myers. So, she, she has a background and is comfortable being the superintendent and she knows, you know, she knows the city, she knows the people, she knows the buildings, she knows the, the families.
Maybe she doesn't, that she didn't know about the Black Box Theater, so, maybe she didn't know the building as well as you might have thought.
Well, she, she knows the buildings, she, she wasn't superintendent for that, right.
It was just a joke.
Right, right.
It was just humor to end the, to end the show on a moment of laughter.
Right.
This is very serious stuff, this is not really a laughing matter, but we all have to have a little laughter in our life, so...
Right, right, well, I've appreciated the opportunity, thank you so much for having me again.
You're doing great work, keep it up, I mean, sometimes you have to be, swim against the stream.
Right.
And after you're doing to get things happening and, you know, hopefully things go on a positive note and continued success while you're trying to accomplish.
Best of success to you.
All right, thank you very much, thank you. Thank you very much, thank you.